Okay Lucy, give me your roll call please.
Keith Orson.
Here.
Carolyn Sprague. Sam Rich Bartlett.
Here.
Jeff Snyder.
Here.
Dan Zier.
Here.
Frankie Schwartz.
Here.
And Stephanie Tibbs.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you Lucy. Could I get in on motion to amend or adopt the agenda?
I need a motion to amend the agenda as presented.
Adopt.
Adopt.
Perfect.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Right. Moving through the agenda. Won't read the board norms, but just call your attention to the board norms as the expectations of our board for meetings. But we'll now move on to the best part of the meeting, the recognition, so it's a good way to start off every meeting.
That's right. Our first recognition is Rodney Foltz. Rodney is our daytime custodian at Rebecca Boone and just one of the most beloved guys in the district. So Rodney, thank you for all you do, we're really proud of you. Come on up here, we're gonna get a picture, we've got a certificate and... Rodney Foltz everybody. (applause) All right Rodney, congratulations. I want you to get a picture over here. Show me the picture. No?
Congratulations.
(inaudible).
Wherever you are. We gotta read through the paper.
(inaudible).
So hard to follow Rodney for sure, is our support staff member of the year then, but we do have an excellent teacher, one of our, one of the best in the district, Hope Tennant. Hope's been served on many committees, done all sorts of things, representatives of the teacher associations and currently at second grade at Dana Boone, second grade, right? First grade, first grade.
Yeah, you're behind.
I was a little off there. At Dana Boone. So, thank you Hope for all that you do, congratulations, I'm being the district teacher of the year. (applause) (inaudible). Congratulations. So Hope will now be able to compete for the statewide teacher of the year if she chooses to do so, so that's up to her, but she's now eligible for that, she will be our district representative in that campaign, so good luck. Yeah. You guys can stick around if you want, but feel free to... It don't matter.
Congratulations to both of you, thank you for all you do. Lucy, do you have any patron comments? All right, move on to superintendent reports and start with the homeless micro program update. Yes, Dr. Ross.
Good evening, so I work with our different department chairs and staff that work with these populations, and so going through this quickly, and of course I'll answer any questions that they may have. Previous year's goals, we wanted to research and understand the barriers that exist that keep students from attending school, and we're gonna see that this is an issue that is persistent across really not just these populations, but through all of our buildings. But for these populations in particular, this is something that, again, is keeping them from being successful, and so we need to continue to understand why it is, or how we can better get them to school regularly. And then also to increase opportunities for interventions in literacy. So we did that, a deliberate step was taken to move interventionists from elementary schools into Black Hawk for this year in order to create, support any LA and math, to really identify standards and to address them specifically. Not just with these populations of course, but with the entire student body, but that benefits, benefits these groups. And then at the high school, they're continuing to refine their at-risk committee, where they're using data from our district data systems to identify through attendance and through grades, people who are students that meet definition of at-risk so that they can develop interventions, different things that they've done is assign student, excuse me, staff mentors for students that are having difficulties, that they can meet with regularly so they have that adult that, you know, cares about them when they come into the building, and a lot of things. So, anything to add, Mr. Straka?
I'm kind of on the spot at this point.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but that's something that they continue to work on. We've been working with, through our MTSS process with the RBDC and DESI, that's something we meet with every month to talk about how we can better refine that process. This supports our current CSIP that we're getting ready to move out of, but the two CSIP goals that we kind of focus on with these populations are, one, increasing the A-plus eligibility rate, and then also, again, that literacy component, getting 75% of all students at K-8 to be reading either at grade level or to achieve one year's worth of growth. So with those in mind, getting to the data, in terms of population growth, you can kind of see the trends there. A couple of things to point out with our homeless trends, this is something that mirrors all of Warren County, that the community council would supply some data for Warren County, Lincoln County, and St. Charles County, and it's interesting, the populations in all three counties, it's very different over, you know, a three years span, how it's growing and changing, but our student population, which I guess would make sense, mirrors very closely what the whole county is seeing, and that we're right about level, and then if you consider the fact that this is just current students, that 82 total there are students that either graduated early or they...
(inaudible).
Okay, transitioned out of the district in some way, or transitioned off of the homeless list, and so currently there are 59 students on that list. Another trend, and I'll be talking about this a little bit more later, deals with our ELL population, so we had been, we had been seeing a three-year decline, a decline for the past three years in that population, and then this year we're seeing an increase, where a third of our ELL students have joined since the beginning of the school year, and this is gonna be, again, something that we're gonna be monitoring, because not only are these new students, but they're also very young, which leads for the potential to compound if we continue to see new students over, and I'll bring that up when we get to another slide, but again, just something that we're gonna have to be mindful of. And then foster students, we're down, it's really kind of hard to predict where foster's going to be, you know, obviously that's just something that every student is so unique in their circumstance that it's, you know, trying to identify a trend is a little bit difficult, but we're down compared to the past couple of years. Okay, so taking a look at CSIP goal three, so taking the students that are in high school, if, and again, some of these are freshmen, so they haven't been in for very long, but just taking a look at where they are currently, of the 23 students that would be represented by these populations, only two would currently qualify for A+. And then the barriers for that, again, like I mentioned before, attendance is the greatest barrier, and then as all 21 of those students are disqualified due to attendance, which is a high bar, you have to have 95% attendance, but at the same time, it is something that is consistent throughout the entire group. And GPA and algebra proficiency also disqualifies the vast majority. So when we take a look at graduation tracking, if they're going to be on pace to graduate, we kind of see students are in one group or another across the different populations. They're either on track, meaning that they, if they pass everything, they're gonna, they're gonna graduate on time, or they are tier three, which is more than one semester behind. So they're, again, they tend to fall in one of those two groups, with just a couple in between. When we talk about goal two, literacy proficiency, so I always preface this by saying I use the GE score out of Renaissance Learning, the grade level equivalency score, that may be different than what the curriculum group uses, probably is, but I feel like it's a good measure, because they take the test three times over the course of the year and attracts the grade level equivalency over the course of the year. And so, again, just to, just to point out, when you take a look at this, the top bar graph being our elementary population grades two through five, and then middle school, when you look at that ELL number, you know, we have 17 in our, in grades two through five and only four in middle school grades, so again, just something worth watching as we move forward, that, you know, this, this population has the, I guess, propensity to compound and become a group that we're gonna need to provide more support for. But you can kind of see the numbers there, you know, again, these are groups that we're gonna have to continue to find a way to get them up to grade level, because what, what you can kind of see from these numbers is, it's difficult to get them to increase a level, so we need to make sure that we're trying to keep them on, on level as best we can. And so, again, the trend from that data. So for coming up, next set of goals, in talking with Dr. Turner, the director of special services, which covers these populations, and also Allison Gertz, and I'll kind of, I'll single her out in just a minute for all the good work she's doing too, but, and not to say that she's not doing poorly on anything, but we just need to continue to research and understand, like, how do we get these kids to school? Because again, by the time they're in high school, none of them would qualify for the free college because of attendance, and so we just need to keep fighting that issue. Then also, again, keep close watch of our ELL population. In addition to growing numbers, we're also running into, again, just the beginnings of issues where when families are coming to register, we're not having, you know, we need translators, because none of them are English-speaking. And so, that's happened a few times this year, we're reaching out to see how we can increase the availability of those services with the staff that we already have, those folks that already know other languages and things like that. And then investigate outreach support for foster families. This is a, it's a tough one, because once they enroll and register, it's often hard to know who's a foster student and who isn't, you know, because they're just a student, and so this is gonna, we're gonna have to pay special attention to that, to make sure that these students are as successful as possible. And again, just real quick, I do just want to give a shout out to Care to Learn, our emotional or educational support counselors, who are led by Allison Gertz, really do a wonderful job every year, and, you know, we hear about the events that they run, but not really the, highlight the bulk of the support that they provide. So they are the primary financial support for Operation Backpack, which helps feed a ton of kids all year long. They purchase almost 700 breakfast and lunch for students, in addition to that, they provide a clothing, bedding, hygiene for families, and then help some students get glasses as well. So Allison is very rarely, I guess, championed for everything that she does, and all the emotional support coun, or educational support counselors, so just wanted to take a minute and give them their due there, but pending any questions, that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ross.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, just to piggyback on the Care to Learn, really like to thank our staff, a lot of our staff have payroll deduction for Care to Learn, a dollar here every month, $200 here, $20, so, so there's a lot of funds, particularly from our staff to support our kids, so a big shout out to our staff for doing that, appreciate that very much. So this is just our monthly financial update, we always do, so we've got our operation revenues, we're a little bit ahead of last year, and then our expenses are a little head down. Last year's expenses ended up being about 4% off, so we were, we were off a little bit at the end of the year, so I think we're just a little bit better, tighter budgeting this year than we were last year. The fund balances are, are down slightly, as we'll see on our chart here, as we can see we're down just a little bit. I think we're gonna trend and dim very similar to last year, probably below last year a little bit, but you can see we're very healthy and everything's looking just fine. So just revenue, right now, local is up, this is from taxes, county is down, that's just the state utility assessments weren't, didn't come in, and this is appreciating values, so we're getting less there than we did last year, but, you know, it's pretty similar. The state is up, and that's mainly from special education funding being, being a little different, then also we're seeing a little bit more in our classroom trust line than we had before, so we'll transfer some of that over as well to the operations side at the end of the year, when we kind of settle all the numbers. We're still kind of a couple months away from knowing exactly where we're gonna be, so. Federal funds are up, again, the special education funding, that's up, so we're up, revenue's up this year, which is positive, because we have, we're up in expenses as well. So we knew the revenue was gonna be up, we did try to spend that to give that raises, which you can see that's resulting in higher salaries and benefits. Purchase services are up, that's mainly in special education, we also added SROs in all our buildings, so purchase services are definitely up this year, and then supplies are up as well. So we're about $2.5 million more than we were last year at this time. How much fund balances to do projects? We have 1.7 in the bank right now, so that's good. Bond issue, just kind of give an update on the bond issue, where we are. So we have a revenue of 9.9 million, what we started with, we did just get 20 million in bonds, so this is the end of April, so this number's gonna go way up next, next month, and that's in the bank, we have it, and we'll be earning interest on that money too, which is great, so that'd be special revenue that we weren't necessarily counting on coming in. So then expenses, we have, we have about 7 million left of that. So on the building, we have the contingency fund, that we have for change orders and things that come in, and so we have $485,000 left there, and that is...
Thanks for adding that last slide.
Oh yeah, please.
Because we asked for that specifically, so thank you.
Yep, happy to do it.
Any questions on financial report? All right. Move on to the consent agenda, where I see 12 items under the consent agenda. Entertain a motion.
I move the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, is there any discussion or questions? If not, we'll move to vote for the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes. All right, moving on to old business. We've got two policy approvals, I think both are around rewording holiday schedule.
It is a facility when we're closed, and everyone is off, so this would be the days that the district are closed, and then holidays. This would be in line with what we negotiated, and so getting policies to match and negotiate agreement, everything lined up.
Any questions or a motion? Do we need a motion on that?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't have recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy approvals as district regulations for KTAC1 and KTAR, that's the bridge.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the policies as presented. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Policies approved. Moving on to new business, rolling right through. Got a couple new business items, I think the first two have to do with entrance to the new schools, so Dr. K.
Yep, so, so the entrance to the new school on Highway 47, that's MoDOT's road, and so we've been working with MoDOT to try to get that entrance set up, and kind of the preliminary plan was that MoDOT was gonna do it all. They were gonna do the engineering, they were gonna do the drawings, they were gonna handle it all, and the original conversations were that they could have us all done by August 27, and we would basically split the cost. So the estimated cost was about $3 million, and so MoDOT was gonna pay about 1.5, we'd pay about 1.5, and everything would be great. Well, after we, after they actually got the application and were reviewing it with the higher-ups and the big team that reviews these, our, the dates weren't right. They said if they wanted to do it all, it was gonna take them until 2029 to get it done, and so that's a problem, so we needed to have it done with our planned opening date of August 27, of 2027. So through some conversations, what they would recommend is that we would private hire an engineer privately to do the engineering, they could work quicker, and then we would handle construction, but they would split the cost with us on the construction cost. So the construction we estimate to be about $2 million roughly, and so MoDOT would pay a million, and we would pay a million, but we would gain two years of time. So essentially, we'd have to pay additional $500,000 to gain two years, and so I would rec, we have the money in the account, I'd recommend we do that, and what MoDOT is asking is for the board to have a formal motion to cancel our current cost share application, and then we would reapply for a cost share application at the July deadline for just the construction cost alone. So we haven't answered any questions on that.
Does MoDOT have to print the engineering that we would hire when they have to print?
They'll have to sign off on it and agree that it's all up to their standards, yes. But they just, at this current time, don't have the manpower to get it done.
Thanks for coming up with an alternative.
It was a team effort, you know, of all the engineers, and then all MoDOT, everyone that does this work for a living, so you can't wait two years, that's for sure.
We're ready for a motion.
Yep, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to cancel our current cost share application with MoDOT and to reapply to cost share with MoDOT for only construction costs to the new school admissions.
Thank you Frankie.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to cancel the current cost share application with MoDOT, reapply for a different cost share with MoDOT. Is there any further discussion, questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, second item is contract with CDB for the engineering of the new students.
That's right, so this would be the company that's done our traffic studies and been partnering with us this whole time, so this would be that same company that we've been working with all along, so we recommend, then they've given us an estimate of $255,000 to do this project.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the contract as presented.
Thank you Keith.
I'll second.
Motion as second to approve the contract as presented, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, third item on new business, summer school, SRO.
Yeah, so currently in summer school, we do not have an SRO assigned, they're just as, please do come by as needed, so in working with the city, the city has agreed to pay for about half of the SRO for the summer, and I'd recommend that we would add that, so this would give us a permanently stationed on our campus for summer school.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented. And Rich?
I'll second.
Thanks Carolyn. Motion and a second to approve the contract as presented, is there any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Budget amendment number two.
Yes, so you'll see a budget amendment here, this is, we're trying to get as many things as actual as we could at this point in the year, we're gonna use this budget to build next year's budget off of, so when you get your budget book in, end of June, it'll have last year's actual numbers, and this year it'll say budget two at the top, so these are the numbers that we'll be basing it off of, but also try to project as close as we could to where we think things, some things are gonna be, but we know some things are also not exactly right, but where we kind of hope them to be. And so when you look at a budget amendment, you see that we have a $25 million surplus, that's a positive thing, right, but all that's bond issue money, so it's not really that lucrative. So when you see that we're at $77 million in revenue and $52 million in expenses, just know that that's not, that's not all, all surplus. So, and actually, when we look at our operational budget, the way that the numbers are in the budget right now, it's about $300,000 deficit. Now, we'll probably be even or slightly surplus, because that doesn't include unfilled positions, dock days, money people didn't, don't spend in their budget, and then also, like, when you're getting this $20 million under our bonds, that should generate $100,000 or more in revenue in just interest over the next couple of months, so we should be on an either even or surplus ending budget, but we'll find out where, where we are at the end of the year with that. So just some kind of things to note, you know, as you can see on the budget amendment itself, it's just we moved local taxes to actual, increased interest earnings, they were way off, you know, I think, and so we increased to 300,000, which is probably still short, so probably see some more revenue in that. And then all the activities that we've received from fall sports, winter sports, moved all those to actual. And then we've also adjusted the state formula, we were off on that a little bit, so that's all been adjusted. So anyway, that's kind of the highlights, I can go into more details or whatever, but that's just kind of highlights of it.
Any questions for Dr. K on the budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you Frankie. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment as presented. Any further discussion? All right, if not, we will take a vote, all those in favor of the approval of the budget amendment as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Budget amendment passes. Louis Beatty surveying contract.
Right, and we have a problem with water running off the track onto home plate, which is not a great place for it to go, so we just need some surveying to look to see how's the, what's the grade there, what needs to be done, so we'd ask that Louis Beatty come out and survey that for us and give us some correction.
Any questions or motion?
I make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Thank you Stephanie.
I'll second that.
And Rich? We have a motion and a second to approve Louis Beatty contract as presented. Any further questions?
So how much is that going to be, so what are the great, like, estimations?
Yeah, I don't have a great dollar amount on that, they're always been very reasonable though, whatever, but you're right, they're, they're kind of all over the board on their estimation of whatever it would be, but let's kind of look at it, you know, pulled up here, but, yeah, in my head I had it under $10,000, but it could be a 15, so we should, we're fine.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm actually gonna ask for a roll call vote on this one. Someone related on board, so, so we'll move to vote, all those, not all those, any of those in favor, we'll just go one by one, so Rich?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Frankie?
I'm staying.
Deanna?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last item of new business is concrete and asphalt contract.
Yes, so we have some repairs that need to happen around the district, this would be a new company that we're working with to do this, but we have all the confidence that we can give back, very positive toward them, so recommend Mid Rivers Asphalt to do the repairs.
Any questions?
Was that our...
There were three bids total in Mid Rivers. All right, I would entertain a motion if...
I make a motion to approve the recommendation as presented.
Thank you Carolyn.
Second.
Thank you Keith. We have a motion and a second to approve concrete and asphalt repair bids as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, policy first read, it's got several this month.
Yes, these are all MSBA recommendations, some Missouri School Wars Associations who are a member of, and they update these as laws and things change. Most of these are just trying to keep up with federal language, changes in federal laws, purchasing, I don't really see anything's gonna change our day-to-day operations very much, because we don't really purchase a whole lot of like property or equipment with federal money, so everything should, shouldn't change too much with these, but if they have to answer any questions, I can't, send them. if they have to answer any questions, I, I can, same.
I don't have any questions at this, Stephanie.
I do have a question, how will this impact our budget?
It shouldn't very much at all.
Specifically the nutrition piece.
Yeah, let's pull that one up here. Which policy are you looking at?
Actually, the very first one.
Yeah.
It's one of the first things. So they require us to purchase American-made.
Right, so our vendors have been pretty good about that, and I don't know what percentage we have now, American-made, but, you know, we, they normally do pretty well, I'm not anticipating major costs increase there, but there could be, I'm just not anticipating, it's hard to know.
Do you know if there's any redundancy to this policy?
Uh, let's see here.
Is this a preference?
Yeah, I think there is, the way I read it was, it was, you have the option, so you can do locally grown, like farm-to-table, like it's not something you had to do for the new, new, new section. It just includes, yeah, so when you read the policy, it'll comply with all the regulations, and which includes the buy American provision, so it's just adding another kind of layer there. The way I, way I interpret that, but I can look into that some more to make sure.
Okay. Well, as a reminder, these policy first reads are, we don't vote on them tonight, we just, we have them presented so that we can vote on them next, next meeting, so we'll have a month to, to read over them and come to the next meeting with questions if any come up. So we will move on to miscellaneous, and start off with celebrations. Anyone have any celebrations?
I'll go. Last night was the awards night for the seniors at the high school, and they were awarded over one and a half million dollars in local scholarships, which I am always proud of this community, and the Wise Foundation gave twenty-six or twenty-seven, one-thousand-dollar scholarships, twenty-seven, and that's, that's something.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, and that's something that a lot of us try to support, like going to the red and white dinner and stuff, and it's just always great to see our kids do so well, and they, a lot of the kids had really good offers from schools, and some of them had offers from several schools, some of the athletes especially, and I thought that was really cool to see. So it's, it's always nice to go to that and get to participate, and I awarded the Belcher Scholarship on our behalf to the young lady that we, whose essay we chose last fall, and it was, it's always a big celebration, fun to be there.
Awesome. I'll just talk a little bit about, you know, this time last year, we were talking about adding the two new sports to the spring, and stunt cheerleading and boys volleyball, and I know that they just finished up their seasons this past week with the districts coming up, the boys host, we're hosting the volleyball district for the first time in the history of course, and I think we play tomorrow afternoon or tomorrow evening against Timberland to open up the district playing here at home. Just congratulations to both coaches, Coach Philip Peck with the stunt, and Coach Brown and his staff with the boys volleyball, successful year, just because of the excitement, and everybody was really enthusiastic, and the kids did well, and so just a shout-out to both those programs for adding to our, and all the other spring sports have been doing great too, we had a lot of success at the track meet, I think we had eight or nine different champions in the GAC track and so forth, and baseball's doing well, so just shout-out to all of them that compete, make us proud.
Awesome. I also had the opportunity, excuse me, last night to go to the area FFA banquet, where all the area, I'm going to call it probably fifteen schools, fifteen FFA programs get together, and Warton was well-represented, Warton FFA was well-represented, had several of the FFA students coming away with first-place awards from different contests they've done out here, so always a, a nice way to, to end the FFA year with, with a nice celebration and stuff, too. Any other celebrations?
All right. Workshop topics for the May meeting?
I don't have anything I need for May, so, but everything of the board.
Is there any workshop topics anybody can think of that we want to have in May? The alternative is canceling the May workshop session.
That's a rough one.
All right. I don't have any, so I guess if no one else does, we'll set the next regular meeting and have an evening off of the workshop.
I'm going to add up my paid map.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'll make a motion to set the next regular Board of Education meeting on June twelfth through twenty-twenty-five. Rich?
I'll second.
Motion and a second to set the next regular meeting of Board of Education for June twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting is set for June twelfth.
I make a motion to set the next closed session to a meeting to proceed, the regular Board of Education meeting on June twelfth.
Carolyn?
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second to set the next closed session to a meeting to proceed, the regular Board of Education meeting on June twelfth. All those in favor, signify by a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We love Tris.
Opposed, same sign, meeting adjourned.
Yeah, look at that.
Look at that.